Good evening. And welcome to our city council meeting for June the 6th, 2019. We will start with prayer and pledge by Mr. Ronnie Martin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Please bow your heads and pray.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity for us to be together as a community. We know that tonight will be challenging in some ways, but we also know that through those challenges, we will all grow and we will be better. Lord, we're also mindful of the recent graduations of so many of our high school students and college students. We're very thankful for the families that have supported those individuals and for the role that they will take in our community. Please be with them as they grow and learn and be with us as we make decisions tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by individuals with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we have Mr. Greg Tucker, our historian, to get up and enlighten us. Mr. Tucker?
Word must have gotten out that this was a history night because we got -- (laughter) It didn't turn out. And I wanted to talk about fraud and whistleblowers tonight. We all know that most of the real estate property land in Rutherford County was initially titled through what's referred to as the North Carolina Revolutionary Land Grant Program. In 1784, the state of North Carolina decided to compensate those who served in the Revolutionary War, the veterans, by granting land in this undeveloped territory, western North Carolina, which eventually became Tennessee. The North Carolina Legislature delegated the authority for the land grant program to the North Carolina Secretary of State. His name was James Glasgow. They gave him absolute, complete, and exclusive control over the program, and he acted accordingly. The process was, he would issue warrants to the veteran, and then the veteran could exchange that warrant for deed and title to land in what became Tennessee. He had the ability to give a warrant to anybody he wanted, including himself, and he did. He had an individual named Martin Armstrong based in Nashville. That's his pre-Tennessee Nashville. And it was Armstrong's job to take the warrant and then assign the deed and do the survey and what have you. And he also took advantage of his position. Not only was Glasgow able to and was taking property in his own name and giving it to his friends, but the procedure said that a veteran simply needed to bring documentation from his military commander confirming that he had been in the military, and he'd be entitled to a warrant. It was scaled so that at the lowest level, a private who had served two years would get 228 acres. A private that served seven years, the full war, got one square mile, 640 acres. A brigadier general got 12,000 acres. A colonel would get 7,200 acres. So you can see those that were in a position, colonel-ing up, to sign notes essentially confirming that you were a veteran serving under me, could write that note for virtually anybody they wanted to, and they did. In fact, a lot of names of people who didn't exist turned up on veterans lists and were issued warrants. The warrant then was purchased, bought, or just taken by the senior officer who listed the individual. Finally, in 1797, a young politician contacted the governor of North Carolina, a fellow named Samuel Ash, and advised him what was going on. The governor quickly acted. Glasgow was terminated, prosecuted, found guilty of land fraud, and then he disappeared, turned up in Tennessee. He had a lot of friends over here, but then Tennessee was a state. North Carolina attempted to extradite. John Sevier said, "No, we're not going to send you back." Turns out, John Sevier and Martin Armstrong were very close friends and involved in several activities. They also asked that Armstrong be terminated and asked that he be sent back to North Carolina for prosecution. John Sevier also blocked that. John Sevier, when they finally started unpeeling the onion, they found that John Sevier was implicated as well in the land fraud. Martin was left unprosecuted, but they did go to his office in order to, as we say, seize the records and throw him out of office quite physically. He refused to leave, but before the authorities got to the office, there was a fire, and most of the records were destroyed. A fellow named William Christmas was appointed to clean up the matters, and both Tennessee and North Carolina appointed him, so he had dual authority by then. And he also saw some opportunities. And when he found a false name that was used for one of the grants, he would put it to another name, occasionally his own. When he discovered through surveys that there were areas that were not claimed one way or another, he would assign them frequently to himself. If you drive south on Highway 231 towards Shelbyville, you'll cross Christmas Creek. It has nothing to do with the holiday. That's named for William Christmas because it seems that he turned out owning most of what today is the Christiana community as a result of his duties. Councilman Shacklet, I know his knowing, who was that whistleblower?
I don't know.
Want to hint?
Yeah.
He was, at the time, Tennessee congressman. He also served as a Tennessee senator. He also served as one of the original judges on the Tennessee Supreme Court. He was a military hero.
Murphy?
He became president.
Johnson?
Andrew Jackson was the young congressman who blew the whistle on the whole scheme back in 1797.
He had his own --
Unlike some whistleblowers who suffer consequences, it sent him in the right direction. Hope we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tucker. Always excellent information. Thank you.
Adalina, if I might, let me just include a memory of history as well today. It's the 75th anniversary of the invasion of France, and many great soldiers, past and present, who served at that time, we remember them and we're a greater country because of their service, and we certainly need to make sure that we remember them today, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. All right. Now we are ready for the consent agenda. Any corrections, comments? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion, please, in a second.
Say move.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Upstein.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Ordinance 19011, second and final reading, budget amendment finance.
We are asking that before you pass this on second reading, you make an amendment to it by motion. We want to add some revenue and expense balanced items for fleet services and for police. A fleet has some extra revenue that they would like to budget to cover some unexpected increases in repairs for vehicles, so that will not be in effect to fund balance. It will be balanced. Additionally, police has some grant revenue that has come in unexpectedly in this fiscal year, and they are ready to spend that, so we want to budget the revenue and expense, which again will not affect fund balance. So we would ask you to make that motion to approve the amendment first and then approve that ordinance on second reading as amended.
Can we get a motion on that?
Move for approval.
Second? Can we get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This would be for the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Now for the ordinance as amended. Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will conduct a public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 appropriations and tax rate ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak?
Vice Mayor, if I could, a few comments before we get started with the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. We, as staff, has prepared and presented a budget to council for fiscal year 2020. The total city budget, which is composed of the general fund, the schools budget, water resources, and the electric department totals $536 million, all of which council will consider. But I think, however, most of the discussion and most of our discussion over the past few months has been focused on the general fund, which next year in FY '20 would be $191 million. The budget's proposed as a balanced budget. We anticipate, therefore, that anticipated revenues would meet or exceed our expected expenses. In formulating the budget, staff used historic data and made realistic assumptions based on solid economic information that we've gathered. In preparing the budget, we've also focused on council's goals to balance the city's budget and eliminate its use of fund balance and to stay within the prudent financial policies the council has adopted long ago. In order to meet those goals, we've recommended a couple areas of revenue enhancement this year. Just as context, in FY '19, it's anticipated that we'll use $4.5 million of fund balance when we close out this year. Usually after we close out and reconcile accounts, we do a little bit better. We hope we do. We always do in each year. Projections for FY '20, however, without a revenue adjustment, would leave us with a, using the fund balance of about $15.5 million. Obviously, we can't continue that trend. We have looked at expenses very carefully. As a matter of fact, last year, we went through a round of cuts through the departments, asking the departments to cut 10%, which most were able to do, but it did affect services. As a matter of fact, many of the cuts that we saw did, additional expenses were accrued to try and work around those. They weren't sustainable, not to sustain a level of service. So this year, we took a careful look at that. We looked at the amount and requested that departments only ask for additions to their departmental budgets that they absolutely needed, and then we cut about $1,004,000 out of those requests. So we continue, and we have. What we learned last year was that we were a lean organization. We have been a lean organization for quite some time, and so this year, while we considered expenses, we were left really with the only option of looking at the revenue side. So in adjusting revenue, as council knows, sales tax rates cannot be, we cannot adjust our sales tax rate for the city. Fees, we believe, in most cases are appropriate except for one, and this is one of the areas of revenue enhancements, and that has to do with solid waste collection. Solid waste collection is a utility service. Staff has recommended that it be self-sufficient and billed as a utility service. We started that beginning, or mid-year last year, or this FY '19, we started billing for that. The budget that's proposed incorporates a fee increase of about $5, not about, but $5 per month per can for residential, $30 per can per month for commercial to reflect the additional level of service that commercial establishments receive. That is not full recovery. That doesn't make the fund self-sufficient at this time, but it is an incremental step. The other thing it doesn't do is incorporate the costs associated with closing Middle Point landfill, which is imminent, and right now, we are studying, along with the county, on how to address those costs, but those aren't included in our cost recovery at this point in time. What we're left with is an adjustment to the tax rate for next year, property tax rate, I should say. A little bit of history on the property tax rate. It was last adjusted in 1998. At that time, it was 1.9% for $100 of assessed property, property assessment. Today is .9494, or .95 in round numbers. That's a 51% reduction in our property tax rate over the last 20 years. It was adjusted downward five times in the last 20 years. During that period, we did see significant increases in sales tax. We saw new properties come into the city, and we were able to sell land that the city had invested in wisely some time ago. The land is gone. Sales tax have flattened over a period of time, and the increases have not gone up thanks generally to internet sales and other opportunities to buy things, and new property just doesn't, with our tax rates being adjusted, we're not able to sustain our expenses any longer. It's no longer sufficient. Other factors during that period of time, city grew 115% in population growth, and I'm often asked why population growth isn't paying for the new expenses. The fact is that cities don't, the cities tax certain activities of people. They don't just tax people. They tax certain activity, and that's inconsistent. Not everybody engages in taxable activity to the same extent as others, but the demand for services is relatively consistent. So as population goes up, the demand for services and the cost of providing those services goes up. So what happens is, growth doesn't equal additional revenue in an equal extent as it does the demand for expenses and services. During the, some general economic conditions during that period of time, the CPI, our Consumer Price Index, a measure of inflation, has increased by 51%. Measured nationally, the cost of providing municipal services has gone up 70%. The cost of municipal construction, again measured nationally, has gone up 85% during that period of time. If we focus just to the last 10 years, inflation's been 19.5% in the southern region of the United States. Wages for local employees, and wages is important. Wages is our number one expense, compensation for our employees. Wages for local government employees in the Nashville area, including Murfreesboro, has increased 20, 23% in the last 10 years. Unemployment in Rutherford County in 1999 was 9.9%. It's now 2.4%. That has a huge pressure on what we have to pay to both retain and to hire good people. So there is a lot of pressure on our wages. The city is a service business. We need people to provide that service. I will say, over the last 10 years, that our people have gotten much more productive. We've increased our productivity on a per capita basis by about 21%. It's largely due to investing millions of dollars in information technology, as most organizations do. In the most recent years, we've had to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in cybersecurity, which we didn't have, there was no need to do that 10 years ago. So in the last, just the last few years, we've had hundreds of thousands of dollars that had to go into that, and there's nothing that we could have done about that, and there's no way to cut that. So expenses on a per capita basis have increased despite the numbers that you just heard on what happened in general economic condition. We have worked very hard, and expenses on a per capita basis have increased only 3% in the last 10 years. Property taxes on a per capita basis, however, have decreased 8% over the last 10 years, and the general fund revenue has decreased on a per capita basis 4% in the last 10 years. So growth is not paying, and growth will not pay as we go forward. There is a reason why property taxes in most larger cities are, or taxes in most larger cities are higher than they are in smaller cities. The demand for services is greater, the cost of providing those services is greater, and as we grow as a city, that's what we'll have, we'll have to face. The other thing that growth does, it impacts our infrastructure and our investment, our long-term investment in our infrastructure quite heavily. Construction costs nationally over the last 10 years have increased 31%, and there's another 20% increase in that, just in middle Tennessee, for the demand for construction services and materials. So when you think about long-term, I think it's important, when you think about the city and our long-term investments, to look at the city as really working off two separate budgets. One is our operating and what we do on a day-to-day basis, and one is our capital investment, our long-term, what we call our Capital Improvement Program, or CIP. That's a separate budget. Council will address that in the coming weeks, and you know, part of that decision is what we will finance for the next few months. But those are two separate, those are really two separate budgets. Taxes really funds operating expenses, and then debt really funds the long-term capital investment that we make in the community. They come together in two aspects. They come together in revenues by doing economic development activities and expanding our revenue base, and they come together on the expense side in our debt service. So what we pay for the money that we borrow is related to what we have to do to invest in our community. So keeping that in mind as we go through with the connection to the operating budget, we should understand, and what you've seen is that our CIP, our long-term investment in our community, over the next five years, what we have on that, that investment is $737 million in projects. 61% of those, about $447 million, are roadways, which is what we all hear about the most that needs to be improved. So 61% of that is related to roadways or maintenance of roadways. 14% is for parks, 10% is for public safety, police and fire, and another 10% for city schools. Now, $338 million of that, $737 million, is already funded, so we have funds, or we have funds arranged through state and federal money. So that leaves $400 million of unfunded capital improvement projects that we would like to undertake over the next five years if council decides to do that. So currently, we need new and innovative ways to fund those activities, and we're studying that as a staff over the next few weeks. We can bring proposals and recommendations in the coming months to council to do on how we can address those things, but it does impact our, from our debt, which is our second largest expense in the future. So with council's direction and assistance over the last several months, I think we've developed a strong, viable budget, one that allows management to carefully maintain the thoughtfulness that we put into our expenses to make sure that we don't unnecessarily expend public money, but it also recognizes the demands that we face as a growing community both now and in the future. So we greatly appreciate council's direction. I also want to say I greatly appreciate all the hours that staff has put into preparing the budget, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. If not, we can do public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Tindall. Now we are ready for the public hearing. Anyone that would like to come up and speak, would you please come to the podium, give your name and address? If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll have five minutes. And each speaker will have the opportunity to come up only one time. And in order for us to conduct this hearing efficiently, I ask everyone not speaking to please, please remain silent at all times. Mr. Tucker, will you be my?
Yes, I will.
Timekeeper?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll open the public meeting.
It's good to be first. My name is Richard Baynes. I live in Parkview Terrace here in Murfreesboro. First, I am like hundreds of Murfreesboro homeowners, a retiree, living on a fixed income and concerned that the cost of growth is not being shared fairly. When the subject of impact fees comes up, developers cry that impact fees have a negative effect on affordable housing. The problem being that everyone associates affordable housing with new construction, ignoring the fact that for many who are on fixed incomes paying for the cost of growth through property tax increases and fees for services, takes the form of a reverse impact fee and makes owning our own home increasingly less affordable. Unbridled growth has driven the cost of repairs up, forcing some elderly homeowners to hawk the house, to replace the roof, and to give up who knows what to meet the monthly note payment. When property assessments go up, so does homeowners insurance. The city manager has been quoted as saying that it could take two years to implement impact fees. I don't buy that. In my management career, I learned that a task will expand to the time it's given. If I were city manager, I would give the responsibility for the development of impact fees to Darren Gore with a first pass pro forma by mid-February of next year. Why Darren? He has excellent managerial skills and has been able to come up with a method of allocating water and sewer connection fees based on recovery of costs to that service. While this is not as complicated as construction impact fees, there exists an unmistakable similarity. Another thing I learned in my management career is that when you delegate responsibility, you should also delegate the authority needed to achieve that task. Construction impact fees will involve input from every department that provides a service, and as city manager, I would give Darren the authority to delegate responsibility for providing the needed cost of service to the affected areas. One of the biggest tasks would fall on the legal department to provide statutory guidance, and I'm confident that Adam and his staff are capable of doing that. Finally, what should the fee be? No matter what the final number is, assume that it will be wrong. Like most fees, it would be adjustable. I would start by figuring the income difference between whatever the final tax percentage increase is and 21%. That would be the amount to be recovered through impact fees. I would divide that number by an arbitrary fee of $1,300. Some fees would be more, and some would be less than $1,300, but at least it would be a starting point. Based on housing start forecasts, the time to recover the income difference becomes predictable and sets up a pro forma that indicates while sharing the cost of growth is shared in a manner fair and equitable to all.
Mr. Baynes, I'm going to have to stop you. I'm sorry.
It's called sharing the misery.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dixie Whitley. I live at 829 North Maple Street in Murfreesboro. I'm a retired registered nurse, a property owner, and a taxpayer. And I am, first of all, I'd like to say that I love Murfreesboro, and a lot of the reasons I love it is because it's a college town and also because of the things that you have been doing in the past several years. But I'm against a 39% increase. That's a little bit much. And you say, "Well, we've got more people, so we need more money to build --" And you say, well, we've got more people, so we need more money to build roads, to build fire stations, and this and that. Well, there's two ways to raise taxes. Yes, we haven't had a tax increase per se for a while, but we have had assessment increases in several times in the past years. Okay, I want to say just one thing. If I was a little kid in school, and I wanted a bike, but my parents couldn't give, get me one, I decided to put on a play. I charge a dollar. If one person comes, I'll get a dollar. If 10 comes, I'll get 10. If 100 comes, I'll get my bike, probably. Well, these people that are moving in, they're paying impact fees, they're paying sales tax on the purchases that they make, they're paying gas taxes, they're paying property taxes, and a lot of other things. So that should be a big help in that. Recently, in Murfreesboro, we have had a new police building, fire halls, a new fire training facility, the Greenway, that's not really that new, soccer fields, golf courses, and other things. And several of them, according to the newspaper, were over budget. So my advice would be to thank you for the things we have. We're in good shape. But stop now, and take, pay, pay for what we've got, and take a few years, and then when we get where we really need new things, then we'll be in better shape to pay for them. As citizens, we have to live within a budget, so...
Your time is up.
We would appreciate it if you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitley.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Bill Ford. I recently retired from my position as the Weatherford Chair of Finance at MTSU. I'm a former president of the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta and a banker. The reason I'm talking to you this evening is because I had a nice meeting with our city manager and got a copy of the summary budget, and when I had a chance to study it, I must tell you of some shocking things I found. Let's begin, assuming you have your budget in front of you as I do. On line three, you can see that there's a proposed 45.3% increase in total property tax collections from 19.2 million up to, from 42.3 billion up to 61.5. That's a $19.2 million increase, 45%. In addition, I've been listening to what the county is proposing, and they're proposing a 10% to 12% increase in property taxes at the county level, which affect us. When you add those two together, what we're looking at is a 55% to 60% increase in property taxes in the coming year on people and businesses here in our city. I want to point out that that is something unheard of. I've been living here for 29 years, and I've never seen anything like this happen before, and it shocks me. I'd like to make just two or three short notes about how this affects people. What concerns me most of all is how it will hurt groups other than where Craig and I live in Stratford Hall, where we are mainly, but not exclusively, middle and upper-income people, including 50 or 60 widows and single retirees like the man who spoke a few minutes ago. This increase, if it's allowed to go through or anything close to it, is going to be very harmful to some specific groups, and I'm most deeply concerned about our lowest-income families, our minority families, and especially also our MTSU and other college students who are going to be faced with huge increases in their rent if they're renting. I'm not, I don't own any property, but I know a lot of people who do, and if you put on this kind of increase on owners of apartments, it's going to be passed through to the poorest families who can afford it the least, and to MTSU students, over half of which live in local apartments where it's the biggest thing in their budget, and it's going to be worse because they're also being hit with tuition increases that are coming on stream. Therefore, I ask you...
Time is up, sir.
...to reconsider basically what's going on here. We do not need a 55% to 60% increase in the actual property taxes collected here.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you have any questions about it, I've done a lot of homework on the budget. If I may ask my neighbor, Craig, please stop referring to tax increases as revenue enhancement.
Dr. Ford, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down. Thank you.
Hello. My name is David Whitley. I live at 829 North Maple Street. I'm going to use part of my three minutes to ask some questions. Exactly what are fund balances?
It's public comment, not question and answer.
Okay, I take it fund balances, it's like my checking account, a reserve, and when I pay extra taxes, it comes out of my fund balance. You said people don't require services, and then you've had an effective 8% decrease in revenue per person. People live in houses, people live in apartments, many of which have had impact fees. When you have a piece of grass over here and suddenly somebody builds something on it, that's a revenue enhancement. There's an impact fee, and there's property tax, either commercial or residential. You said people live, you said we've, all this is because of growth. Well, my suggestion to you is quit issuing building permits, cut the growth off. One more thing, you said it's for roads. I submit Middle Tennessee Boulevard in front of MTSU as your poster child.
Thank you, Mr. Whit. Anyone else care to speak? When someone finishes, just feel free to follow them, please.
Okay, so I just heard about this meeting tonight, so I don't have anything prepared.
Excuse me. Can I get your name and address?
My name is Dorey Keat. I just moved to Murfreesboro March of last year, actually moved in July of last year, and I live on Tamarack Drive in the Chloe Easter community. And I think it's unfair to assume that just because someone bought a $300,000 house means they can afford more taxes than someone who bought a $100,000 house, because I've lived in Nashville. I moved to California to get a job because there was a freeze on teacher hiring in Nashville, and when I tried to move back, people are paying cash for houses here, and I could not get in. So I literally am paying more, I had to pay more for a house, $100,000 more. My house is worth $100,000 more in five years. So there's been like, what, a 30% increase in the price of houses? So to assume that because I had to pay that much more in a house means I can pay more in taxes, I tell you, I've never paid such a high house payment. I'm a single mom, I have single income, and I was living in a one-bedroom home with my, my twin teenagers in California, and having seen the rates in California, please don't turn this into a California crazy housing place. People move here because it's still somewhat affordable, and it's beautiful, and I love Murfreesboro. I never even knew much about Murfreesboro because I lived in Hermitage before. Murfreesboro's beautiful. Thank you guys for doing such a good, great job for this community, but I disagree that more growth is somehow, we're not recovering more revenues, because I know I'm paying taxes, and I don't think it's fair to impose the taxes on just the property owners, because a lot of people choose to live in apartments because of a lack of a commitment. But I think that everyone living here should take on the extra growth, not just the property owners. Yes, I appreciate the schools, and I know that we're developing more schools, but I'm literally mowing my neighbors' yards and babysitting so that I can make sure that I pay my house note. So it, I, just because I have a $300,000 home doesn't mean I can really afford it. It was just a better option than spending $1,800 to $2,000 on rent, and I think everyone needs to own a home, because if you increase rent, we're screwed. So buying a home is our only safety net. So if you take away our homeownership security, you're hurting us. So I think homeownership is super important, and people in California can't own a home. Please help us to continue to own homes without raising it to where we can't even do that, because people are making a lot of money off of renters, and it's not fair. And so everyone should be able to own a home. We all want to do everything we can, but the renters also need to pay their fair share.
Thank you.
I have to say.
Hi, my name is Steve Blades. I live in the Chloe Easter community here in Murfreesboro. The last time that I stood in this room was almost six years ago in a zoning meeting, and we were talking about multifamily homes, and I was opposed, and they were for it, and that's okay. But at that time, there was also plans to build 3,500 multifamily units in Murfreesboro, and part of the reasoning behind approving all of those zoning changes was the new revenue that that was going to bring in. So if we've got all of this new revenue coming in, why would we need such a high hike on our property taxes? Because like you've heard from several people already, what this is going to do is put undue burden on a lot of families in this community from all different walks of life. I understand that we need services, and we've got more people, and with more people, you need more services, and that costs more money, and that makes sense. It's obvious more money's coming in because of all of these people, so that's good, too. But there was also the mention about these projects that have gone so far over budget. Maybe where we can recoup some of these revenue losses is to hire some better contract lawyers in this building.
Thank you, Mr. Whit. Before the next speaker gets up, I would like to ask everyone to please remain silent. That includes clapping. Thank you. We're ready, sir.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Calvin Tussi. I live at 161 McNeil Drive in Murfreesboro, 37128. As I said before, once we increase this tax rate, I think that we might go down a very dangerous road of assessing our problems to be a lack of tax revenue rather than a problem with the spending. I know that if I look at my own personal budget, my family budget, as I would the, the city budget, and I can't afford to make ends meet where it's important, I don't continue to finance a golf course, or in my case, let's say, pay my boat payment over my mortgage payment, or put food on the table. And so these are very drastic solutions. I understand that. We're trying to come to a solution very specifically with this issue, but I really wish, and I really hope that you guys consider, even if this does have to happen to close the gap, maybe a timetable on the property tax increase to come back for revaluation. Maybe we take 50% of the budget shortfall out of our surplus fund, but I do believe that there is a pathway to some compromise rather than saying immediately we need to increase our, our tax increase, our tax, our tax revenue. Like I said, in my own personal finance, if, if I can't, if it's between luxury items such as making my boat payment, or maybe in the city's case of operating golf courses, or even some parks, I think I would choose the necessities of keeping my, my, my lights on, my utilities on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Gabriel Fancher. I live at 3104 Matty Kate Court. I made sure to write that down because I forgot it once before. I know that you guys are in a tough, tough spot, and so I feel for you. You guys were elected to make hard decisions, and so this is the kind of thing that elected officials are supposed to do, is make hard decisions. What I think that is important, that, you know, we're hearing a lot of people talk about how in their personal life they would make cuts and things like that, and so I think the people want to hear that there are cuts being made, that, that there's some real diligent thought going into it. But the problem, in my opinion, is that you guys are part-time people here. No offense to you, but you've got real lives at home. You've got full-time work and families and things like that that you've got to take care of, and you've got to keep happy, otherwise you get divorced and things of that nature. So I understand. But, and so what I would encourage you guys to do is to look at this issue from not just the, whether we should raise taxes or not, but how can we get you guys some help? When you look at all the different committees that you guys have, there are committees out there for cemeteries and for parks and for, you know, all kinds of important things, but there's no budget committee. You guys are not, I mean, we have so many smart people in this community, like Dr. Ford right here, right? And no, I, I, you know, we're just not using the valuable resources we have available. And so what I think we should do is we need to add more council members to the, to this chambers. We need district representation. There have been people calling for that for a long time. I think we could add these and keep our at-large positions, and that would help shorten up some of the work that you guys have to do. I think that would be very important. Another thing that's really important is that we get a full-time mayor in here. You guys are victims of, you know, you get this, a big budget dropped on your desk, and you've got like a week to decide on it, you know, and there's, so there's no time for you to really dig into it and figure it out, and you have to take the knowledge that's given to you as the truth. You have no choice really in the matter. And so I don't, I don't blame you guys, but I think it's time that we, we've grown, and growth is good. I think growth is very good. It gives opportunity to peoples, gives jobs and things of that nature, so it's very important. But we need a full-time mayor at this point, and I think that this is the time for it. This shows the need for it. There's a 40% shortfall, and you, you guys were blindsided by it. I've heard that from you guys, that you were blindsided by it, and that's just impossible in my mind to see, but when you think about it, you're part-time, and that's, it's not your fault. It's the, it's the, it's the way things are set up, and so I encourage you to not just focus on this, but think about how we can keep this from happening in the future. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Fancher.
Hello. I'm Juanita Thuen, and I live in the Bradford Place subdivision in Murfreesboro. I'm also a Realtor, and I understand what an impact fee does to the price of real, real estate. However, it's clear to me that our impact fees have not been enough to make up for the extra growth that we're having. A few years ago, I ran for city council. Some of you may or may not know that. Mr. Shacklet does. And I ran on one issue, and as a nobody, I got a lot of votes based on that issue, and that was that we were building too many apartment complexes in this city. Now, the reason why we don't like apartment complexes is because it adds a lot of people and a lot of traffic and a lot more to the school system, and the impact fee that you get from it is not enough to cover the cost of growth. In fact, our city manager said, "Growth doesn't equal revenue increases from items that we can tax." He said it himself, your city manager. "You have got to do something about all of these apartment complexes." Now, I am privy to information on the Realtors' Property Resource. That's data that most of these people cannot see. I don't even know if you know it, but did you know that we now have more renters in Murfreesboro than we do homeowners? That is fact, according to the Realtors' Property Resource. That's not a good idea for any community to have more... That's not a good idea for any community to have more renters than you have property owners. So my big thing is y'all need to curb the apartment complexes that are coming in. We can't afford them or you're going to have to increase, drastically increase, the impact fees on apartment complexes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm at 415 North Spring Street. It is on occasion, a lakefront property over here in downtown. I've missed days of work. I've missed ticketed events because I can't leave my house because I have two to three feet of water in my front yard that comes from city drainage because of inadequate infrastructure. I know that we love golf and we love soccer and all the other sports ball things, but if we're going to spend this money, could we spend it on infrastructure? If my roof is leaking, I have to fix my roof before I get to go do something fun like repaint the dining room. So I would love to see us use our money wisely because it's our money. I would love to be able to not have to skip a day of work because of rain, because of lack of infrastructure. And some of y'all have seen photos of it. It's been suggested that I not throw the CD under the bus in talking about it, but it is an infrastructure issue. So I'd love to see us work on infrastructure and maybe calm down a bit on some of the sports ball and fun things.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Rainwater, 1129 Tiberius Way. So I want to start out by just, uh, just kind of telling you a little story, thinking about this. Say I'm an employer and I want to move to Murfreesboro and I'm, I'm entertaining this town. And I show up and all of a sudden I see in the paper that you're on a 39% tax increase. I'm going home. I will, I will not bring my company to this town. Because what that tells me is you've got a spending problem like a drunk sailor. And that's a bad thing, guys. And that's, and think about that, when you're trying to recruit these, these people to town, think about the impression you have when these corporate officials come to town and they see these kind of things. And they will do their homework about your tax rates. They will absolutely do it. And when there's a city 30 miles down the street, it's about half, see you later. They don't want you. You'll get a tax abatement for a short period. You won't get it for that long though. You know, that's just the way it is. So you're going to lose that. And that's not, that is not a good thing. And when all the other surrounding suburb cities are less than you and you're wanting way beyond that, no. No, I'm going to take my business, I'm going somewhere else. And that's also why you may not have too many good jobs in this town. Your, your white collar jobs are not here. They never have been. You've been talking about those for 20 years since I moved to this town and I've worked in Frankland ever since. So, so the other thing I want to kind of lead into that is when you, when, when you think about the comparable cities, I hear a lot of people say, well, they're different, they're smaller, they're this, they're that. The truth is, we're in range with those cities as far as our size go. We're not a standalone city. We are a suburb. And the bottom line is, if we've, if you've, if the city management has gone all the way through economies of scale to our 140,000 people, to the point where we're getting diminishing returns, that's a bad thing. That's a really bad management situation. We need to fix that. And that's a spending problem, not a revenue problem. Because when you get to that point, there's no return. You're going down the road and, you know, next thing you know, you're Nashville rates. But you're not Nashville because you don't have sports, you don't have all these other things for people, you're paying for all this other stuff, just not there. The last thing I want to talk about is, think about what you're doing to those families who can't afford, can barely afford that $250,000 house. And you're taking away their kids' soccer, you're taking away their kids' extracurricular activities, you're taking away their kids' dance. That's what you're taking off the table. Those things come off first. You got to pay for the house, you got to have a car to drive, and you got to have a house over you. That's what you're taking away. So remember that when you go to sleep at night, that when you raise taxes like this and you go down these roads, that's what you're taking away from these families. And they're working really hard for this. And they like this town. I want you all to remember that. Don't, don't, don't let that slip your mind when you make your vote on this. And of course, as many of you know me, I'm going to wrap up one more thing and get out of here is, you could actually sell the MRF for scrap metal. You might get a little extra money there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I spoke with you earlier just about some, just a philosophical approach, I guess, to governance. My background is in political consulting, so I want to give you guys just some public opinion stuff. My organization, Tennessee Rising, we did a phone survey about two weeks ago. 325 residents of Murfreesboro, representatively sampled, actually oversampled from a general election versus the August election because I wanted to get more unaffiliated voters. Results, 83% of people opposed the tax increase. I think this group behind me tonight would be 100% of individuals. Haven't heard anybody support it so far, but let's do the partisan breakdown because we actually, I actually dug into that to make sure we had representative sampling. 88% of Republican voters oppose this, probably not a surprise. 67% of Democrat voters oppose this, and 80% of unaffiliated voters oppose this. The more that individuals learn, the slightest bit of a touch, just that, just the littlest bit of the gross level of incompetence and lack of oversight that the city's engaged in, coupled with the ridiculous programs that we all see money being invested to, millions of dollars for tennis, rebuilding soccer fields, 14 and a half million dollars that somehow the mayor is proud that we're going to invest into a soccer facility that the city should have no business owning? If it is a profitable endeavor, a private enterprise would love to have that, they can make money on it, and the city should sell it as an asset, close the hole, and start fixing long-term, long-term problems. People get this in its very simplest terms. So here's my political threat to you guys. I did this in Ohio for years. I've run statewide campaigns, probably at 14 different local issues, state and, and candidate campaigns. Anybody that supports this is on my watch list at this point. I didn't want to do this in Tennessee. I came here to get away from this garbage. Ohio has committed suicide, guys. I came here to leave it and what do you know? I'm, I'm confronted with it again. I don't want to mess with this. I'm trying to get out of this game. But I feel like Al Pacino, you're bringing me back into it. I don't want to be here, but I'm, I'm here because I have to be, because it's going to cost me between this and the county, something over 1,000 extra dollars a year just to live in a place I thought was going to be a cost-effective location. So congratulations, she got somebody off the bench. And based on the polling that I just put out and, and got the sample from, from people, it's not going to be a tough election issue when 2022 and 2020 roll around to say, hey, most of the time candidates don't stand out from one another. But this year, did your guy vote for a tax increase? Here's an alternative for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Littleton. Excuse me, may I have a copy of that? Once again, the outburst, burst of clapping, we may have to ask you to leave the room. So please respect that. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Ross List. I live at 4410 Mordecai Avenue, 37128. I talked to you earlier about a couple of things and I'm going to kind of rehash it again. I'm not ignorant to the fact that Rutherford County is going to do a 10% increase. I'm not ignorant to the fact that we may actually do a 10% here. I would be almost happy, and I would say most people in here would be happy with just a 20% increase because that would push a little bit further down the road so that we could find the problem that we seem to have, that everybody here is keeping the hit on. I cannot speak better than the gentleman right here, the doctor, who said somewhat eloquently that we have a spending problem. I also would like to say that we have not exhausted all of our options. We have talked about impact fees, permits, building fees, hotel occupancy taxes. We're looking at all kinds of things that we need to do. But what I'm asking is that we please take the example from all these people out here and get a team together and discuss the best that we can do. I live on a street that I am a unicorn. There is only two people on my street who are from Tennessee. I have people from California. I have people from Illinois. I have people from New York. I have people from places that our income taxes are 14.5% and that's a income tax on their, their actual income. We don't have one here. People come here for one reason. We have great schools, we are a great culture, and we have great, great places to live and low property taxes. So when I ask all the people why they come here from different places and always ask me, hey, you don't have a southern accent. 20 years in the military after living around the world and I've seen all kinds of crazy taxes, doorknob, window, pole, all kinds of taxes. What, what is next? Taxes never go away. And I understand, you, you said before, we haven't had a property tax in 20 years, but we've had a property adjustment. My property value has gone up and that is a tax. And what we need to understand is sequestration. I was in the military for 20 years, from 2008 to 2017, we did not get a pay raise. And administration said we did not get a pay raise until we got a promotion. So when I was retiring, I got a pay raise by a new administration. Sequestration, I had a budget of $9 million for my unit. If I couldn't balance my budget, I got fired. You know what that means? I needed to talk to my lower-class individuals, far as my staff sergeants, my tech sergeants, and I brought it up to my colonel. We needed to cut our budget. We couldn't drive our cars. We had to get bicycles for police patrols. We had to make sure that we didn't have, run too much gas. We had to worry about our infrastructure. We had to make sure our balance for our roads because we had snow in Japan, 258 inches a year. Could you imagine what that does here in Tennessee? We have one snow, one snowplow that barely works and people can't drive on that here. All I'm asking is take the belt and cinch over because what we need to do is buy and pay for what we need and not what we want.
Thank you.
Hey, again, I'm David Criswell. I live at 1951 Cliffview Court. I think the most frustrating thing about coming here and speaking is that everybody in this room knows that this tax increase is a done deal. It's just a question of how much. I've probably talked to 50 people in the last week and I haven't talked to a single one who believes that anybody who's spoken here tonight is going to have any effect on the outcome of, of this budget. And I think if you guys don't see that as a problem, that may be the biggest problem, bigger than the budget. For longer than I've been in Murfreesboro, the city has been spending money on all these programs, various sports parks, sparks, sports parks, et cetera, in an effort to broaden the tax base and make out-of-towners pay our taxes for us. When is that going to start happening? Because every new park puts us further and further into debt and yet it doesn't appear that we're ever going to see the benefits that have been promised. More traffic, more debt, bigger budgets, and now higher taxes. When is the payoff we've been promised? Next, please stop comparing the local government to a business. Number one, businesses do not get to force people to do business with them. And number two, if someone was running a business and had a $16 million shortfall, they'd be laying people off or doing anything they could to be cutting expenses. If they didn't, they would be gone, they'd be out the door. Revenues have doubled in the last 10 years. You say this tax increase is for schools, fire, police, et cetera. Have teachers' salaries doubled in the last 10 years? Firemen or police officers, have their salaries doubled? I don't believe that they have. Will they be double after you pass this increase? The trash fee is allegedly for trash. Is that money being socked away for when trash expenses actually do increase or is it just being spent along with every other dollar that comes in? And maybe one of the largest issues I see is the timing of this. You guys just agreed to borrow $58 million. That's almost $5 million a year for new additional debt. How can you borrow $58 million for airplane terminals largely used by the wealthy and MTSU students only to turn around a month later and start crying that we have a financial Armageddon on our hands if we don't raise property taxes by 40%? That's a rhetorical question because we already know the answer. It's because if you were talking about raising taxes for airplane terminals, you'd have even less support than you currently have. Which brings me to my next point. Aren't you guys supposed to follow the will of the people? I have yet to talk to, well, everybody in here tonight, not one person has, has come in here to, in, in support of this tax increase, not one person. We have a crisis in Murfreesboro. The crisis is, is that our, is in our government identifying the difference between needs and wants. The crisis is in identifying priorities. The crisis is in the lack of ability to say no every single time someone comes along with an idea for a new taxpayer, taxpayer-funded pet project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Criswell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've just got a few points to go over.
Can I get your name and address, please?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. First point of order. Name's Eric Sharp, lived here for 12 years, came here in 2007. Live in a home at 3322 Barfield Crescent Road with my wife. And I got to tell you that we can't afford this kind of additional expense. And a almost 40% property tax increase is going to lead to gentrification. It's going to transform this place into somewhere that I don't recognize. I really like this town. That's why I've, I stayed here when I came here for college and that's why I own a home here. So, you know, we do need to optimize and cut spending. I think other people have given a lot of coherent details on that that, you know, they've spoken for. And as a voter and as the treasurer of the Libertarian Party of Rutherford County, I can just say that if this passes, I think most everyone in this room will show up to the ballot box.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing no further speakers, I would like to close the public hearing at this time. And council, we would need to consider the changes and of the proposed budget.
I think it would be appropriate for us to have this discussion at perhaps the next meeting when all council members are present. I'm sure that the mayor would like to participate in this conversation as well as Rick Valance, who both had commitments prior to tonight's meeting that prevented them from being here. They wish they could be here. But I, I think it would be appropriate for us to defer the decision and the, the comments at this point. And next meeting, we will try and answer and clarify and, and truthfully correct some of the statements that have been made here tonight. And so at this point, I'll move for a deferral.
Do you want to make that to a specific date?
Next, uh, would next Wednesday work for us? I mean, I don't want to schedule it when everybody can't be here.
Next Wednesday, the 12th.
Next Wednesday, the 12th?
Yeah.
That's not televised, right?
That's, no, that's a, that's not a televised regular session.
Now, all of our workshops up until this point have been at the police headquarters. Will we have it here instead?
We can.
I think it would be more appropriate. I think we can accommodate more people in this room, so.
And it is a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that would make it a lot easier to televise.
And that way we can't televise it.
Yeah. Not a problem.
And when we can, well, is that a motion? I was going to make a comment. Are you making a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion, but you can make a comment if you'd like for.
And when we get together again and consider this, because this is, you know, personally, I've been flipping in my sleep over this, waking up, it's really been bothering me because it's going to have a tremendous effect on me too. I want us to also consider the trash fee from going, going up to $12. Let's possibly look at taking that up in increments, not all that wants this budget. And also regardless of the amount of the budget tax increase we do, I would like for us to look at programs with like the property tax freeze program and programs for the elderly, the disabled, the veterans, tax cuts. Just look at all that when we go to look at whatever the tax increase is going to be.
Still need a second.
I'll make a motion second to defer.
Ms. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills-Harris?
Aye.
So it'll be next Wednesday at?
11:30.
11:30. Hope everyone can come back. It'll be televised, it'll also be played additional times after that. That will be the, the actual meeting and then we'll have the, second reading will be...
Thursday, the 13th.
Thursday, the 13th.
And that'll be at 7 o'clock, so. So, so we'll have a first reading and a second reading before this is approved. And by law, it has to be approved by, or by our... And by law, it has to be approved by, or by our charter. It has to be approved by July 1st. Is that correct?
By June 30th.
June 30th, okay. Missed it by a day.
Yes, it's a public meeting. Let me just say something here, and we're not going to go into this a great deal. The budget process for the city, let me say something to the process. Every time, if you've done a home budget, you probably learn something every time you sit down behind the kitchen table with your wife and children to decide what you're going to spend for the next year. Well, this community does that in a more public setting. And we have to look at everything. I can tell you, while there are some assumptions made that it's a done deal or something's going to happen regardless, I know my colleagues up here and our staff have plowed through this. Hundreds of hours has been spent dissecting this frog of a budget that represents our community. And we have to determine what is not only in the short-term best interest of this community, but in the long-term best interest. And your input does matter. There are people that do listen. And you have a process and a time to continue to add information to that process, speak to us individually. I know I do, and the rest of my colleagues and the mayor as well, the ones that aren't here, welcome your input, to listen about what your perspectives are. But when it comes down to it, eventually, somebody has to make a decision. And I can promise you that it's not something that we do lightly. We take this responsibility extremely serious and look at all of the, what brings a budget for a city of this size together. And it's not just as simple as saying, "Do this," because it doesn't affect me. Do this, because it does affect me. Spend money here, because it does affect me. It's a difficult process, but I can tell you, we take it seriously. And you are part of it tonight. You were a part, taking your time to come to this meeting tonight when you could have done something. You could have sat home and watched this on TV. But you came out, and I applaud each of you for coming out, for trying to get your thoughts together and say anything coherent in three minutes. Juanita, I remember trying to say something in two minutes, and I don't know if I ever said anything coherent in two minutes. But you did a good job of communicating to us. I took notes on this. I promise you, I will be reading them. And I think my colleagues will be listening to what you have said as well. But please, we will be less of a community if you feel like, if you actually walk out of here feeling like your opinion didn't matter. Will it come out exactly like you want it to? It may not, but your input does make a difference. And the only way it doesn't work is if you don't contribute. If you don't sit up at that microphone and say something. Say your mind. Speak your piece. Say what's on your heart. And it does have effect. It does change things. The bar moves because of you saying something. It may not be everything you want, but I can promise you that we do take it serious and we will do what we consider, because that's the only thing we can do. We will do what we consider is in the best interest of all of our citizens. That's what you elected us to do. And just like you said, the fellow that's the political guy, the alternative is, when we have to stand for election again, if you don't like what we did, run against us or vote against us. And that's the way democracy works. Okay? But understand that we are trying to take this seriously. And this is not a done deal. David, it's not a done deal.
And Mr. Smotherman, on your motion, that includes items 20 through 22, okay? Because that's all under the budget.
Yeah, we defer B through D and then?
Through 20.
Twenty-one and 22.
Twenty-two.
All the way through.
Twenty-three.
Okay. Resolution 19R-16, class?
Did we vote?
Yes.
Did you get a real call? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I missed the vote.
That's okay. Resolution 19R-16, classification and compensation policy, human resource.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, counsel. Staff is requesting from counsel that resolution 19-R-16 to adopt and implement classification and compensation policy be approved. In adopting the fiscal 2019 budget, counsel directed the city manager to amend the city's pay plan to better accommodate market conditions that were restricting the city's ability to hire and retain good employees. City manager implemented a pay plan during fiscal year 2019 that set classification and salaries for employees and placed them in a step or open range plan in addition to adjusting salary inconsistencies and the amount budgeted by counsel. A new classification and compensation policy should be adopted for the employee handbook that reflects these changes and provides for basis for future compensation decisions. Therefore, staff is requesting from counsel that resolution 15-R-11, adopted by counsel on May 14, 2015, be rescinded and shall henceforth have no effect. That employee handbook section 5003, classification and compensation, as attached, is approved and shall be effective immediately, and the classification and compensation plan implemented in fiscal year 2019 are approved and adopted. And that employee handbook sections 1035, 5004, and 5009 are hereby eliminated effective immediately. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments?
If there are no questions or comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade? Vice Mayor Skills-Harris?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution R-1908, year 2019 budget amendments, schools.
Good evening. These are basically housekeeping items that we do every year. So this is to adjust any amendments that we need.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Gilbert? If not, could we get a motion in a second?
Make a motion? Did we approve?
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills-Harris?
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Gilbert, while you're there, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Roughly, what did it cost for us to build overall Creek School, and when did it open?
Do you remember, Mr. Anderson?
Twenty-six.
The cost of overall?
Twenty-six, twenty-six.
Thirty-three. I do know that our budget request this year is about a percent less than what it was when we built overall, our overall request.
Right, but just for the public's sake, I think it's important that we acknowledge the fact that we're currently building the new school. And what is the new school costing three years later?
Sorry, the new school is thirty-three.
The new school is thirty-three.
There you go.
About twenty-three.
So how much was the construction cost, just for the construction cost of the two?
I think it was about twenty-three.
The difference?
Yeah. It's the difference with the same school.
It's about twenty million for overall and about thirty-three for the new one.
And that's building the school from the same plans and blueprints as the previous school?
Right.
And that's part of the explanation, I think, that the public needs to understand is the huge construction cost and stuff that we're facing with the growth that we're experiencing. It's not just that we have to build another school. It's the fact that costs have appreciated at such a rate that it's making it even more challenging when budget time does come, so.
And I think one thing we can note, too, if you remember, our earlier schools were one-story. So with this two-story, you're really saving a lot more money than you would if you were just building one-story, because you don't have as much under roof. And also, you're going with the thermal heating and cooling, which we've learned that when you put in the thermal, that you're going to pay for that in about two years as compared to our spread schools. So that's one thing, one reason that we went to the two-story. We found it much more cost-effective.
Yeah, and I've noticed in our latest school that we've also gone to all LED, which will have huge efficiency over what we've had.
Right, and we were able to get most of that through a grant, really at almost no percentage or a very small percentage as far as interest.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Based on the growth, when do you estimate, estimate that we may need a new school, another?
Well, I think we're looking at about four years is what we're looking at. It all depends on, though, as far as the building that occurs.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Next item, employment of Holland Blake Martin as facility attendant, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and counsel. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce myself. My name is Rachel Singer, and I'm the Assistant Director for our Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here tonight to request to allow Holland Blake Martin to work as a facility attendant in our Parks and Recreation Department. Ms. Martin applied for an open position for the front desk attendant at Sportscom. After an interview process, Ms. Martin was selected as our top candidate. As you know, Ms. Martin's father currently serves on the city council. And per policy, it is required that counsel approves employment of a relative. So staff would like to process Ms. Martin's application if it's approved by counsel. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just for clarification, this request must pass by a two-thirds vote under the city's nepotism policy.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right.
And of course, I'll abstain from the vote, so.
Thank you.
Could we get a motion in a second, please?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skills-Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. That was a hard one. Community development?
It wasn't me, Vice Mayor, applying for the job.
Nice to laugh every once in a while. Community Development Fifth Year Action Plan 2019-2020 for our community development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor and counsel, the Fifth Year Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, received by the city annually since 1984, has been completed by the Community Development Department of the city. The process actually began in January, and the plan is due to HUD, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, June the 24th. A copy of the plan was sent to you earlier, prior to this meeting, so you'd have time to look over it. I think it was around sixty pages. And some additional information to you, which of course you have this evening. HUD regulations require an action plan be approved annually by communities as a condition of receiving the Community Development Block Grant, which we refer to in the city as CDBG funding. Staff recommends counsel approve the Fifth Year Action Plan and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the required plan applications, forms necessary to submit to HUD, and implement the action plan, subject to final approval of the city attorney. Along with this is a recommendation to approve public service grants to strategic partners and authorize the mayor to execute sub-recipient agreements with those partners as prepared by the city attorney. Community development operates under a five-year consolidated plan, outlining program goals and objectives specific to Murfreesboro, which is submitted to and approved by HUD. The most recent submission of the consolidated plan was in July of 2015. Annually, community development produces an action plan to implement the elements of the consolidated plan during the program year. This is the final action plan under the 2015 consolidated plan, under the direction of the Community Development Director. Planning will begin this month for the development of the city's next five-year consolidated plan. Guidance will be sought in that process from mayor and counsel in setting the goals and the accomplishments for the community for the use of the CDBG funding. Also, considerable public participation is a vital part of that process. Staff has prepared this action plan based on the current consolidated plan and public input gathered from our public participation activities to utilize the CDBG funding for the fiscal 20-year, which is eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. Also, estimated carryover funding of CDBG funds from the fiscal 19-year of sixty-nine thousand, and estimated program income of fifty thousand. Action plan elements and projected funding include housing rehab at seventy thousand, nine eighty-seven, direct homeownership assistance at a hundred and eight thousand, acquisition at three hundred and five thousand, infrastructure at two hundred thousand, fair housing at a thousand, and public service at a hundred and thirty. Those are our public service grants. They have to be capped. The total allocation for public service grants must be capped at fifteen percent of the CDBG allocation. Our administrative funding, which also must have a limit of twenty percent of the total allocation, is slated for a hundred and seventy-two, seven-hundred-and-forty-six. A future budget amendment for actual funding levels will be presented to city council at the time the city closes out the fiscal 19-year. This proposed Fifth Year Action Plan will be funded at a total of nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. It includes the CDBG funding for the fiscal 20-year, the prior year carryover, and program income. There will be no city funds required for this item. Implementation of this action plan will provide for assistance and services to low- and moderate-income households, homeless individuals, or individuals in danger of becoming homeless in the city of Murfreesboro. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Let me ask one question. Did block grant money this last year go up or down?
It went up this year.
That's what I thought.
We received an increase of about sixty, a little over sixty-seven thousand dollars. It is a formula grant that's given to cities across the nation or received by cities across the nation. You do become an entitlement grantee, or you can, when you reach a population of fifty thousand. So apparently, in 1984 is when the city of Murfreesboro reached that. And we do apply for that each year, even though it is a formula grant that's received by the city. And that formula is based on population, is based on the need, your housing stock, the age of the housing stock. The majority of the money across the nation is used for housing in some fashion.
So this coming year's census should help us a little bit, maybe?
Very important for the census.
Yes.
Along those lines, I will just say that in the Community Development Department, we do partner with a lot of organizations. One organization in Murfreesboro is the Continuum of Care for the homeless population. And that organization does plan to participate in the census count, because even though folks are homeless, they're out in the city, and they are going to try to help with counting those people, those persons that are homeless.
Thank you.
Do we know the percentage of possibly people that are homeless in our city?
I don't know the percentage of people. And unfortunately, I may not be the right one to speak to that.
No, that's fine. You just mentioned homeless.
But I will tell you that there recently was completed, just in the last sixty days, a homeless point in time count. And if I'm not mistaken, was it over four hundred, over four hundred people? And you would just be amazed at the number of homeless children that we have attending schools in the city and in the county. Okay.
Second.
Gilbert could probably speak to that.
Yeah, I was going to ask the question, Dr. Gilbert, about how many homeless kids do we have in our schools? I just hear that's increasing. I was just concerned.
This is a really rough guess. I think we're between a hundred and fifty and two hundred. And when you look at that and consider that we're just talking pre-k through six, that's pretty substantial. What we're seeing a lot of, too, is we're seeing a lot of doubling up of families. And so we're seeing a lot of families living with other family members coming in. One of the good things is, and it can't One of the, one of the good things is, and it can create a burden, but I think it's really important, is the idea of keeping a child in the same school for the whole year, and we are required by law to do that. So that means that if little Johnny went to Reeves Rogers, and he moves over to Black Fox into that zone and still is homeless, we would transport him still to Reeves Rogers. We're blessed in our community to have social workers in our schools, and they stay busy all the time. So we're very, very grateful for the partners that we have that, that help us with our homeless children.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gilbert. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. This is for approval, a construction contract with Boyce Ballard Construction Company. The bids were led on this project several months ago. Greg has been doing some value engineering, Greg McKnight, our construction manager, and we've been working with them to do some value engineering to try to get the total construction and cost down on this project. Total construction cost for the building itself is $3,948,000. The total construction cost, including furniture, fixtures, equipment, traffic signalization and alerting system for the station, brings the total to $4,468,271 for the entire project. We would proceed, I think, toward June the 24th or so would be our notice to proceed date. We would schedule a groundbreaking sometime between now and then. This, this station will serve the Blackman community, located on Blais Drive, just adjacent to Blackman High School. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments?
I just have one, and just to be sensitive to the budget discussions that we've been having, and my learning process as I've gone through this, when we're referring to total cost, we're referring total cost of the project, not total cost in this budget cycle.
Yes, total cost of the project, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
No questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Who is the second?
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Me, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye. Thank you. Approval of state maintenance contract for FY 1920.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is our maintenance agreement with Tennessee Department of Transportation for maintenance of state routes within the corporate limits of Murfreesboro. This project, or this contract basically covers items such as street sweeping, pavement marking, some asphalt repair, mowing, litter removal, snow removal, and debris removal. The state allows us to do these services, so we can control the timing of them, and reimburses us for those, for those tasks. The total amount of this contract, which would be a reimbursement from the state back to, to the city, is $302,692.35. We recommend approval with that, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Memorandum of Understanding with Rutherford County Regarding City-Owned Property at Fortress and Blaze.
Vice Mayor, this is a memorandum of understanding to allow us to begin to work with the county to develop a building on the corner of Fortress and Blaze, northwest corner of Fortress and Blaze, if I remember correctly. The county intends to put county clerk's office and work with the state for a department, a motor vehicle department there, both which will be assets to our Blackman community.
Okay.
We'll, just if I could add, we'll also bring back a land lease, once that's completed with the county for, for approval by council.
Thank you, Mr. Tindall. Any questions or comments? If not, could we get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Modification of formal First United Church property sale and purchase agreement.
This is amendment to the purchase and sale agreement to allow a sufficient amount of time for the developer to work with the IDB, to the Industrial Development Board, to create a TIF district for that piece of property as part of the financing that originally was anticipated as, as part of this project. We just need a little more time, and this amendment allows for that time to, to run.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, could we get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mrs. Wright, any dear comments?
There are not any tonight.
Voice and commission appointments, we have none?
We do not.
Payment of statement?
Yes, we did have a list that I laid out before the meeting with two items on it.
Did everyone get that?
We did. I did have a question about the 2018 pole attachments, because we've never seen that before, but it's explained to me that that's for the fiber wire that we now have in place that we haven't in the past paid for, so that Murfreesboro Electric line does look to be appropriate. All that said, I move we pay the bills. Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Other business?
Yes, Vice Mayor, there's one item of other business, and that is that we need to reschedule some public hearings where the advertisement for those hearings was not run within the 15-day notice requirement. So I hand that over to Mr. Blomley to propose a date for those, those hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. These are the three public hearings that were originally scheduled for June 20th. We would ask that the city council reschedule those three public hearings, which are three zoning and sign ordinance amendments to June 27 instead, and we will have adequate time to run the legal notice. If you, if you push those back a week to June 27.
Move that we move the public hearings for those three public hearings to June 22nd. Second.
Mrs. Wright, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Any other business?
Just one brief comment of the speakers tonight. There were two speakers that spoke tonight who claimed to be city residents, who gave county addresses. So if, if you don't know if you live in the city or not, you might want to check and make sure, if you're going to come and speak at the next meeting, just make sure you're really a city resident if you're going to say that you are, unless your address says that you're not, so.
Any other comments? If not, I pray that each of you be blessed and have a safe trip home. Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, we cannot, yes, sir. Once you've spoken, you can't speak again. Everyone be blessed. Thank you. We adjourn.